Basically, what your average Wednesday night high school meeting looks like is everybody comes in. We kick off the meeting with announcements, things that Croya's been up to, such as our
Along with our weekly meetings, we also have after-school drop-in hours for middle schoolers. They run from Monday through Friday about...
comes in. We kick off the meeting with announcements, things that Croya's been up to, such as our clubs.
Fourteen meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Where's the court caller, please?
Certainly, Honorable Mayor Schoenheimer.
Here.
Alderman Waldeck.
Here.
Alderman Beidler.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderman Pendeleon.
Here.
Alderman Tac is absent.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Here.
Alderman Adelman.
Here.
Alderman Moreno.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda this evening is reports to city officers. First one is comments by mayor. I have two things this evening. First of all, we had some of the members of the council, some staff, some former aldermen, and a couple of former mayors actually joined us on Saturday. We did a tremendous tour of Forest Park. And I would encourage any of you to get on their website. It is a true transformation of an absolute jewel in our community. And I think just about everyone, hopefully everyone in town, has also received a packet in the mail information. I think Alderman Beidler may have it, very good. We hadn't planned that beforehand, just so you know. I would encourage you to look at it. I would encourage you to spend a little time with it. It is an absolute delight, and I think this community will be thrilled with the end result. And I would say, if you are inclined, and you've not yet done so, and want to make a contribution, no matter how small, I would encourage you to do so. The project is still short of its goal. I'm happy to say that about 80% of the dollars are private contributions. And so whether it be $5 or $500, I would encourage you to think about it. But it's a tremendous thing for our community, and I think we all can be very proud of what that's going to be in the end, and the enormous amount of time that so many people have put into it, both city staff as well as private residents. So it's a terrific thing, and it was a real joy, I think, for us to be out there on Saturday, even though it was 45 and raining. Next item on the agenda, swearing firefighter/paramedic Chuck Creens. Chief Howell, would you like to come forward?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. It's truly a privilege to come before you to present Chuck Creens, who completed his 12-month probation. The interesting thing about Chuck is Chuck is a seasoned veteran who came to us after serving for North Chicago and Beach Park respectively. And you know what I'll tell you about this individual is, he's like this, the whole time. He's a good man. He comes to us with a lot of certifications. And I will tell you, normally, you go through an extensive period of time where you hope that the individuals come to you with the credentials. Chuck comes to us as a state-certified firefighter, too. He comes to us as a paramedic, to the point where he is usable right away. And quite honestly, he saves the city quite a bit of an expense as well. But I highly recommend him to you at this point. And Mr. Mayor, I would ask that you do the honors of swearing him in.
Raise your right hand if you have to, please. Aye, Chuck Creens.
Aye, Chuck Creens.
Do solemn swear.
Do solemn swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
And the ordinances, rules, and regulations.
And the ordinances, rules, and regulations.
Of the City of Lake Forest.
Of the City of Lake Forest.
I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a position of firefighter/paramedic.
The duties of a firefighter/paramedic.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And I further swear.
I further swear.
To uphold the mission.
To uphold the mission.
Of the Lake Forest Fire Department.
Of the Lake Forest Fire Department.
And work to fulfill.
And work to fulfill.
Its vision to the best of my ability.
Its vision to the best of my ability.
To that wish. Well...
And that concludes my report. Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. Before we get to the next cheering section, I wanted to report that at the last meeting, you tabled an item about epoxy floors. And you should have received an email from staff indicating that they've done some further research. And we're not going to proceed with the contract. They will void the...or dismiss the bids that we had received. They are going to take a different approach, and if the cost comes in over $20,000 in terms of the purchase of material and so forth, we'll make sure that that comes back before the council. But I know you tabled that at the last meeting. We just wanted to let you know what the final decision of that was. It is my pleasure now, if I can find Todd back there somewhere.
Todd!
Speaking of somebody bringing his own cheering section, we have actually two things tonight. We have a report on Croya, but it's also, I think we have another special guest in the audience. This is Bring Your Daughter to Work Night. Is Matty Moore in the audience?
Right here.
Matty, you want to come up front so they can see...your mother wants to see you on TV to make sure that you actually came here. Does that come under comments by the public? Now that we have thoroughly embarrassed her, we'll turn it over to Todd, and he's going to tell you about what's going on at Croya.
Fabulous. Thank you, Bob, Mayor, Alderman. We're totally honored to be here. We're excited to be able to provide you with a little glimpse of what's been going on at Croya. Because the kids are far more technology savvy than any of us, the video, we're counting on a few extra minutes for maybe the video to come up. But basically, we're going to start off by giving you guys each a small token of appreciation from Croya for the support that we have. We have some kids that are going to give you a T-shirt, the Croya Empowering Teens book that was written by Elaine Slaton years ago, and also the most...the original CD that was cut from bands that have played at the Croya facility. So if the kids want to come up and hand each one of the aldermen one of those packets, that would be great.
Is that a bribe? I was going to say, do we have to report this?
This is a handout in order to inform you about what we're doing at Croya. And without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to our chairwoman, who's been running our Croya meetings for the first couple of months of this school year. She's wonderful, and she's been getting a lot of good work done, Kelly Jacobs.
So I'm Kelly Jacobs, and I'm the chairwoman for Croya this year. Just thank you guys so much, the mayor, to the aldermen and elderwomen for having us tonight. It is such an honor, and we're so grateful to be able to come here and just kind of show you guys what we're all about. So you guys got our little gifts. And something that I think is kind of cool about the CDs is not only are they literally from people that are recording at Croya, it is a total perfect example of the unconditional support from our staff over at Croya. Todd, Joanne, Lauren, Kristen, there's a whole community of people at Croya that stand behind us with our ideas, our suggestions, and the CD is totally just an example of that. People coming together with an idea and having our staff back us up with our ideas. So it's totally awesome. Croya stands for the Committee Representing Our Young Adults, began in 1980, and has evolved into a national leader and community-based youth organizations. We have about 350 meetings, events, activities per year, and that's kind of astounding when you consider that there are 365 days in a year. And when you add it all together, we have over 10,000 participants in these activities throughout the year. People that come and return for meetings and events and service work. We have a huge base of people, youth and staff, that support us at Croya. My main responsibility throughout the year is to run the high school meetings every Wednesday night, and that is a blast. They are so much fun. Every Wednesday, we have kids come in, a nice break from schoolwork in school, and just come hang out. We always have an activity, and it's super fun. We have an executive committee, and they all have their own jobs and responsibilities. Some of them are here tonight. That being said, we hopefully have our video to show you guys, and that's going to give a little bit more detail into what we all do. Hopefully.
Basically, what your average Wednesday night high school meeting looks like is everybody comes in. We kick off the meeting with announcements, things that Croya's been up to, such as our clubs. Then we move on to things like sports and activities announcements. We also have initiation for new members of Croya, so people that are coming into Croya for the first time, it's kind of their opportunity to just like give a wave, introduce themselves, and that kind of thing. After that's all said and done, then we move on to the activity. And as far as activities, there's always kind of a fun game or something going on.
Along with our weekly meetings, we also have after-school drop-in hours for middle schoolers. They run from Monday through Friday about 3:30 to 5:30. Every day, about 30 to 35 kids come, and we run groups like improv club, writing club, art club. We also have a baking and a meeting club.
Every Wednesday, we have open mic from 6 to 7. Every other week, it's on the main stage, and a lot of people come. There's a lot of performances. Everyone has a really good time. In the basement of Croya, we have Activator Academy, and it's where all the music lessons are taught. There's over 100 lessons a week.
We have a wonderful recording studio, which we are in now. You can set up an appointment with one of the staff members here to record with you and your friends whatever song you wish to play. It's always a fun time.
Every year, Croya has an annual fundraiser called the Point Setta Sale, which we go around to the surrounding community and schools and sell plants to raise money for Croya.
In addition to the Point Setta Sales, we also do other fundraisers, such as a bake sale for GLASSA, which is the Great Lakes Adaptive Sports Association. And throughout the rest of the year, we'll be doing many more initiatives to help raise money for Croya, like gas money for the Croya bus to pick up students from the schools, as well as money for retreats.
The topics for the meetings that we choose are based on the topics in which Lake Forest teenagers usually want to know about. One of our big topic night events is the Donut Bowl, where we play flag football with the police. Then we have a discussion to break down the stereotypes between the Lake Forest police and the Lake Forest teenagers. We also do a random fact every Wednesday, so that way people can learn something cool. Did you know that a koala bear sleeps up to 18 to 22 hours a day?
On CSO, we help create and lead service projects around Lake Forest.
Feed My Starving Children's a local food bank, and we try and do at least one monthly trip and offer it to the community to get everyone as involved as possible. We've also planned for this upcoming year a trip down to the city for the Lead 5K, which supports heroin recovery, and also a Ronald McDonald House.
Other community service projects that we do are work trips. Last summer, we went to Battle Creek, Michigan, and with the help of Habitat for Humanities, helped create a ramp for disabled women.
One of the biggest parts about Croya is that we offer two retreats a year. One is in the fall near Thanksgiving, and one is offered in the spring. We take around 90 kids that sign up, and we go to a camp for two to three days. And it's a lot about breaking stereotypes, building new friendships, and it's one of the most memorable parts about Croya, and what a lot of people say that's their favorite thing about Croya.
Croya also offers an 11-week course called Peer Training at the high schools in the Lake Forest area. What peer training is, it's a class in which we teach students how to properly support their peers in times of need.
They're a lot of fun, and they gather all kinds of kids to join them up at lunch. And I've done it twice now. I wish I could do more.
I guess for me, Croya's kind of impacted me in the way that it's just given me this unconditional home. Croya is somewhere that it's always going to be there for you. The staff, they are just unconditionally willing to help and support you with any idea or anything.
I feel really empowered and have a lot of opportunities to reach out to other community members and also allow other kids in the community to get as involved as they can.
Just the people that I've met through Croya and all the fun times that I've had with those people, it's just, I couldn't exchange it for anything else in the world.
I started coming in sixth grade with some friends. We would sneak in. At first, it was just for the free food, but then it became so much more, like I got to know all these amazing people, and I made relationships that I'll never lose.
Having a place where I can just be me and not feel judged means a lot to me, because it just serves that there's a place in Lake Forest community where you can have friends, no matter who you are, what color you are, what sexuality you are. It really doesn't matter here, because if you...once you walk into those doors, you can just be yourself.
Ever since then, it's been a huge part of my life, including the retreats, the coming after school, and the Wednesday night meetings. Everything has really been there for me through a lot.
It's such a welcoming community. I moved here in eighth grade, and I started coming here after school. And then freshman year, I started coming every single week to the meetings, and I have met some of the most amazing people at this place, and I just hope that it continues.
For me, Croya has done a lot in terms of friends-wise. I've met a lot of new kids coming to Croya, and it's really broadened my perspective of Lake Forest.
I guess for me, the biggest thing Croya's done for me is acceptance. I've really gotten to know a lot of people here that I wouldn't have been able to meet without Croya, and it's definitely changed my whole outlook on high school.
It just really shaped me to be who I am. It's helped me become a better person and a better peer. And honestly, if I didn't have Croya, I don't know where I would be right now.
I want to do a special thank you to Spencer Welt. I believe he's here tonight. He's the one that did the video. Also want to mention a couple of fun things. Alderman Waldeck has a daughter, Grace, that came through Croya and was very involved in our programs. And it's been fun getting to know Alderman Moreno, who's our new liaison at Croya. And of course, David Moore, who was a wonderful liaison for us in the previous years. I'm going to finish things off with Kelly, but thank you again for having us, and we look forward to coming again anytime you'd like.
All right. Well, I hope you guys enjoyed taking just a little look at what we're up to at Croya. From the outside looking in, Croya is just a safe place for us all to come together, and that is 100% true, but it is also so much more. Every Wednesday night, when I leave the meetings, I stand in the middle of this big circle of kids. And when I look around, there are kids from, I mean, any group, any sport, any club, all sing together, all intermixed. Croya is a melting pot of people and personalities and individuals, and it's a special place where we can all come together. And I don't know, I feel like I'm speaking for all of us when I say that. That's one of the best things about it, is at school, you go through your routine, you see all the same people, the teachers, whatever. But come that Wednesday night, you know that you can come to Croya, and you can mix with those kids that you don't get to see a lot. And I mean, it's amazing. I mentioned this a little bit before, but the staff here, I mean, they're amazing. They end up not only being these adults, but like our friends, our best friends. Any idea, any thought, whatever, they are always there for you, and I mean, it's changed all of our lives. So thank you guys so, so much for having us, and we hope that you guys can stop in one day and just kind of see what we're up to. So thank you again.
Well, other than learning that Alderman Moore doesn't feed his kids, were there any questions that the council had of Todd or Kelly?
Questions?
But I think it might be helpful, Todd, if maybe you or one of the kids would share the other things that you do in the community that interact with other events or community-oriented activities that we have.
Sure. Of those programs that we do, the social programs, community service, leadership, and retreats, and road trips, we're always interacting with other groups. We work with the American Legion. We do a program in the summer for the Kiwanis Club. We're helping with the Artisan Guild throughout the year. They do two or three different shows with us. If you're at the Lake Forest Library Book Sale, we help clean up with those, clean up the books at the end of the sale. The list goes on and on. But one partnership that we really didn't focus on too much, that's really the base of our connection with the kids, is at the schools. Between District 65, District 67, and District 115, we're in the schools almost every day. And that's really part and parcel of the fact that if we're not where the kids are, they're not going to be connected to the organization. So we have great partnerships with the schools. We've been really excited about the funding that we've received over the years from the Village of Lake Bluff, as well as the schools, to supplement what we get from the City of Lake Forest. And to be honest, it's a really incredible partnership. But if you have other questions, I'd love to field those as well.
Thank you.
Todd, let me ask you a question while you're standing up there. As you can see from the people sitting on this side, we're not quite teenagers anymore. What are some of the challenges that our teenagers in Lake Forest, Lake Bluff are facing today?
Yeah. One of the kids back in maybe the early 2000s that we worked with at Croya put it best, and she said, she was the chairwoman of Croya. She said, "The challenge of adolescence is trying to find your unique qualities that make you stand out in a crowd, all the while trying to fit in." And it's the most amazing concept, because that's what we look at every single day, and we see kids that are trying to fit in so that they feel good about themselves in a group, but also make some identity development, so that they figure out what's important to them, what they want to do in their life, where they want to go to college, and what interests them, all the while struggling with anxiety and depression. Some kids are going through some really tough times every single day. And we have kids that are using substances, and we have kids that are going through tough times at home, family issues and related to that. But we kind of think of teenagers as this, you know, molding of adolescents, where they're just interacting with peers, and you don't really get interactions with them as adults. But that's why Croya is such an amazing place, is because if they don't go home and talk to their parents, that's called developmentally okay. That's normal, okay? We don't want them to do that, but if they can come to Croya and get their problems out or figure out a way to get support that they need, and we can work with them to make referrals to resources in the community. Two of the best organizations that we've been working with over the last years, to speak to Michelle's point, are the Center for Integrative, Chicago's Integrative Center for Psychiatry. It's the most recently what you might have been known as the Child Adolescent Family Development Center, and then also the Family Service of Highland Park. We do a lot of referrals throughout the years to social workers in the schools, but these two organizations are like up and beyond the counseling that we can provide for kids and their families. So the opportunities are there. Coming here tonight to share with you what we offer and be able to broadcast that to the community, I think, is the biggest, most important thing. The heart of Croya, as you could see tonight, is from the kids. That keeps us going, and I agree with you, Bob. I don't feel as young as I did 20 years ago when I started at Croya, but I will tell you this, it keeps you young, and it keeps you moving, and it keeps you having a lot of fun. And as Kelly mentioned, if any of you are looking for a tour on a Wednesday night or a day after school, and you want to see some fun and exciting stuff going on, we'll feed you, too.
Thanks, Todd. Any other questions?
You know, you and I have had a chance to spend a little time together, and I think I've told you that a lot of times people ask me in my role, what makes Lake Forest special? And we've got hundreds of things that make our community special. But one of the things that really make it special and unique is what you do at Croya. And so on behalf of the community, I want to thank you and your staff and your team and the great kids at Croya for making our community even more special than it is. Thank you.
Thanks. And so among our staff, we actually have three homegrown staff members. We have Joanne Yoro, that's been with us for years and went to the high school, Lauren Ramone, who's also from the high school, and Marilyn Brunz, who grew up in Lake Forest. Todd Nahigian, myself, and Kristen Skiston are the two outliers. Todd Nahigian, myself, and Kristin Skiston are the two outliers, but we're doing the best we can.
Well, great.
Thanks for having us.
Thanks, everyone, for coming. That completes my report this evening.
All right, thank you, Bob. I did have one other item on my agenda that I forgot to mention. There will be a community town hall meeting this coming Thursday, the 23rd of October, 7:00 PM, and ironically, at Croya. So we would encourage anyone in the community to come. The council will be there. We'll have some preset agenda items, talking about some of the items that are important happening in Lake Forest, and then an opportunity for residents to ask questions of any member of the council, or myself, or staff that are there. So, again, this Thursday evening at Croya, 7:00, and look forward to seeing everyone there. Next item on the agenda, comments by council members. First item, the Finance Committee acknowledged a receipt of the FY 2014 Treasurers Report, presented by George Pandeleon, Finance Committee Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Trying to figure out what to say here. We are, we need to acknowledge the receipt of the Fiscal Year 2014 Treasurers Report, and I gather we have to vote on that as well. So, we went through this briefly at the Finance Committee meeting an hour or so ago. So, at this point, I think everybody's familiar with the material, and we can...
Do we move to acknowledge?
Are there, well, are there any questions, any additional questions? If not, then I need a motion to approve the receipt of the FY 2014 Treasurers Report.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Biddy.
Alderman Waldeck. Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Adelman.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Acknowledgement carries.
Thank you very much, Biddy. Next item on the agenda, Property and Public Land Committee. Consideration of three recommendations from the Property and Public Lands Committee related to the process for considering the establishment of a tax increment financing district, waive first reading, and grant final approval of two ordinances and approve a resolution. Presented by Alderman Reisenberg, Chairman of the Property and Public Lands Committee. We also have Lee Brown, I'm sorry, from Tesco Associates, who's the city's TIF consultant, as well as Kathy Cerniak, Director of Community Development. Alderman Reisenberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the September council meeting, council approved the PPL to move forward to establish a TIF district, which for the Laurel and Western Avenue redevelopment site. As a follow-up to that meeting, PPL is back before you this evening with an action plan that includes three items. The first is, number one, is approval of an ordinance setting the public hearing date for consideration of a TIF district for the Western and Laurel Avenue redevelopment project. Number two is approval of the TIF inducement resolution by motion. The TIF inducement revolution, resolution states the city's intention to consider reimbursing eligible expenses from the redevelopment project for revenues generated by the TIF district. Lastly, approval of an ordinance approving the establishment of an interested parties registry and adopting registration rules. The purpose of this ordinance is to inform interested parties of the opportunity to register for information and notices pertaining to the proposed TIF district. These three actions, these three recommended actions do not approve or authorize the establishment of a TIF district. But instead, these actions allow for the public review process for considering the proposed TIF district to get underway. After conducting a public hearing in this manner, the Plan Commission will forward a recommendation to the city council for consideration and action on the TIF district.
Questions by any member of the council for either Alderman Reisenberg, Lee Brown's here, or for Kathy about the TIF and what's being considered this evening?
I have a question on the TIF inducement resolution. Will there be, will this result in the commitment or spending on behalf of the ultimate beneficiary of the TIF, or is this just for them to be able to proceed with the TIF? Will money be spent by somebody as a result of this resolution, or will they wait for the actual TIF to be approved?
I'm going to say it's the latter, but I am going to also refer to...
Or Vic.
Or Vic, which one?
I can take it, or I'll start, and I'll let Lee fill in any other blanks. The inducement resolution is merely an authorization so that at some future time, if the TIF is established and funds are available, that would be otherwise eligible for reimbursement under the TIF Act, that they would count. And what this does is it starts a clock ticking from 60 days back. Anything that is more than 60 days old can be reimbursed through the issuance of bond proceeds, if and when the TIF is established, and if and when bonds are issued. That's the effect of this. It does not entitle anyone to any kind of reimbursement. It merely sets the stage so that if those expenditures are found to be appropriate, and the TIF is established, and the funding mechanism in place, they could be reimbursed.
Okay, and it doesn't eliminate any but-for situation for the establishment of the TIF?
No, the but-for elements of the TIF are things that will have to be established as part of the overall consideration and ultimate approval, if that occurs, of the TIF. Part of the but-for is related to the feasibility study, which is available for review online. And Lee Brown of Tesco certainly has information about that and other elements of the TIF, if he has anything to add.
It authorizes no additional expenditures, other than what you've already authorized to begin the process. It authorizes no expenditures that would be reimbursable. You have the authority to do that in the future, and if you do that in the future, they will be reimbursable.
Okay, and number three, the, I don't know anything about this and don't understand it, even though I tried. Interested Parties Registry and Adopting Associated Rules.
One other thing about the TIF is that the TIF statute has considerable numbers of procedural requirements, this being one of them. Some of the things that the TIF Act requires will be done through your authorization on September 2nd at a staff level, including a series of notices. Other things will be done through some preliminary actions by the council and actions by other bodies, such as a joint review board, which is mandated by the TIF Act. Other things will be done through the Plan Commission, through the hearing that is identified in Item 1 of tonight's actions. And ultimately, nothing is final or formal unless and until the council gives it its review and approval. So there's a whole baleywick of things that have to happen before it actually comes to you for a final consideration. Tonight's actions are just a series of initial steps that the TIF Act requires, the Interested Party Registry being one of them, and it does create a mechanism whereby individuals or organizations can register and get automatic notice of TIF-related events.
The statute requires that the property owners within the designated boundary will get notice, and property owners within 750 feet of that. But it doesn't offer as great an opportunity for others outside that area to receive notice. By going through this registry, you can ask to be on a list that will get you all the notice automatically.
Thanks for that explanation. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public here to make a comment or ask a question at this point? Seeing none, as Alderman Reisenberg mentioned, there are three separate motions we need approved, so we'll take each one individually. The first one, waive first reading and grant final approval of an ordinance setting the public hearing date for consideration of a TIF district for the proposed Laurel and Western Avenue redevelopment projects. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Adelman.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy. Next item is approve the TIF inducement resolution by motion. Again, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Adelman.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, and we'll do this one more time. Waive first reading and grant final approval of an ordinance establishing an Interested Parties Registry and adopting associated rules. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Adelman.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. And I want to thank the members of Property and Public Lands Committee for their ongoing efforts, and certainly the guidance of Lee and his group. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. Anyone care to address the council on a non-agenda item?
If I could, as, before we get into that one. And I just wanted to say something about Croya after the kids left. I just know that when we had those troubles a few years ago, and the hospital, and the school system, and the local psychiatrists, and the clergy, we're trying to get together to organize, you know, the only place they could really come up with to meet was Croya, because of this neutral ground aspect that they have. And I thought it was not only a great place for kids to blend, but it happened to be the one place that, you know, the adults came together for, you know, a situation needed. And I just thought that was even more telling.
That's true.
Sorry.
Again, anyone from the public here to make a comment on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, items for omnibus vote consideration. There are three. Again, if any member of the council wants to take any one separately, we'll do so. Otherwise, I'll ask for a vote for all three at the end. Item number one, approval of the October 6, 2014 city council meeting minutes. Number two, recommendation from Parks and Recreation Board and Golf Advisory Committee to enter into a contract with Kemper Sports, Inc., for the management of Deer Path Golf Course. And number three, consideration of a recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals in support of an amendment to the special use permit for the Lake Forest Club approving a modified master site plan. First reading if desired by the city council, final approval. Anyone care to take any of those items individually? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the omnibus.
So moved.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Biddy.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Adelman.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, ordinances. There was one ordinance this evening, the first ordinance on the agenda has been tabled and will return at a later date. So the one item this evening under the ordinance category will be consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of actions related to tentative approval of the Oak Knoll Woodlands subdivision. If desired by the council, grant first reading of an ordinance and grant tentative approval of the Platte subdivision by motion, presented by Kathy Cerniak, Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Mayor Shownhider, members of the council. This petition comes to you from the Plan Commission with a recommendation on a series of actions. The Plan Commission considered this petition at their May meeting, at their September meeting, and after hearing public comment at both of those meetings, closed the public hearing, and then had deliberation and took action at the October meeting. The Plan Commission unanimously recommended that the city council approve first reading of an ordinance changing the zoning on a 30-acre parcel from R5 to R4. R5 has a three-acre minimum lot size, and normally that's considered a holding zone if it's applied to properties within an established, a developed area. In this case, this property was annexed without a development plan. So the R5 zoning was applied to it, and this property was held in the ownership of a local family for a number of decades. The Plan Commission also recommended the application of the Historic Residential and Open Space Overlay District. Again, that would be first reading of that ordinance. And the third action recommended by the city council is tentative approval of the Oak Knoll Woodlands 16-lot planned preservation subdivision. The property proposed for development, again, is slightly under 30 acres. It is located north of Conway Road, west of Waukegan Road, at the end of Oak Knoll. Conway Farms borders the property to the north and to the west. Stablewood Lane is immediately to the west, and a portion of the golf course is to the The area to the south was subdivided in the '60s, '70s, and '80s, and these areas were subdivided prior to the current regulations that pertain to floodplain, wetlands, and on-site detention. You do have an air photo in your packet that's a little clearer, but again, just to give you the context of the site, it is bordered on the east side by the railroad tracks. This is West Campus over in this area, and the Gavin Court subdivision. So it is within, it really was one of the last large parcels in this portion of the city. Plan Commission, again, considered this subdivision over a number of meetings, and they heard a considerable amount of testimony. Most of that testimony was from property owners in the immediate neighborhood, and those residents raised a number of concerns. The Plan Commission also received quite a bit of written testimony that was made available to the city council. In summary, the key issues raised by the neighbors and then considered by the Plan Commission included the appropriateness of applying the R4 zoning to the property, the appropriateness of applying the overlay district to the property. And just to comment briefly on that, the overlay district was established in the '80s, and it was established for the purpose of preserving natural resources and historic resources on a piece of property that was subject to subdivision. It was developed in response to the subdivisions that occurred in the '60s, '70s, and early to mid-'80s. Those were conventional subdivisions that really simply spread the lots across the entire parcel. This overlay district provides the flexibility to preserve open space primarily, and it has been used successfully in a number of subdivisions, most notably Middle Fork Farm and Everett Farms. The Plan Commission heard concern about density. In this case, this is a 30-acre parcel. If, in fact, the R4 zoning district is applied to the property, approximately 20 to 21 lots could be developed, just looking strictly at the minimum lot size. If this property had been developed when the properties to the south had been developed in the '70s or '80s, likely 21 lots would have been spread across the 30 acres, the wetlands would have been filled in, there wouldn't be any on-site detention. But because of today's regulations, the petitioner needed to come forward and present to the city engineer and engineering staff a conventional subdivision plan to essentially prove up the density, the number of lots that could be achieved on this parcel, while at the same time adhering to all applicable requirements for floodplain, wetlands, and on-site detention. After review of the plans, revision to the plans, requests for additional information from our city engineer, our city engineer and engineering staff did confirm that a conventional lot of 17, a conventional plan with 17 lots could reasonably be developed on this parcel. That's how the density was achieved. The neighbors raised concerns about lot size. In a planned preservation subdivision, there is the flexibility to create lots that are smaller than the minimum lot size, adhering to the underlying density, and in return, preserving open space. The density proposed in the plan recommended to you by the Plan Commission is 16 lots, one lot less than the 17 that could reasonably be achieved using the minimum lot size. The Plan Commission also heard concerns about drainage, about wetlands. Because the properties immediately to the south were developed when rules and regulations were different, there is considerable water that travels through those neighborhoods to the south. The city engineer reviewed these plans a number of times, worked with the petitioner's engineer, and the neighbors also had an independent, a third independent engineer review the plans, provided input. Many of those suggestions were taken into account. The detention pond on the site is appropriately sized. Water will continue to flow through this property to the north and then to the east under the railroad tracks. Based on tenant, review of the tentative engineering plans, the preliminary engineering plans, all applicable requirements appear to be met. If you choose to move this forward, the petitioner would be required to do further due diligence, further calculations, present final engineering plans, and essentially prove up all the information that has been presented to date to assure that all applicable technical requirements can be met. There were concerns also raised about access and traffic. Access in particular, the question was raised, why the subdivision couldn't access from Stablewood Lane? Stablewood Lane is one of the neighborhoods that comprises Conway Farms, and when the Stablewood Lane development was discussed, there was deliberation, there was in fact a recommendation from staff at that time, that there be a road connection through to Oak Knoll. So that definitely was a subject... So that definitely was a subjective discussion. However, that neighborhood was approved with Stablewood ending in a cul-de-sac, and Stablewood Lane is a private road. It is not a public road. It is owned, maintained, plowed, will be reconstructed at some time in the future by the Conway Farms Homeowners Association. So the city does not have the ability to require a connection to that street. Two traffic studies were completed by the petitioners, were reviewed by our engineering staff, and found to demonstrate that the residential streets in that neighborhood can accommodate the 16 additional lots. Our police department, at the request of the Plan Commission, also did a study of accidents that have occurred in this general area over the past 15 years, and found that the accident rate was about 1.5 reported accidents per year, very low in comparison to other residential neighborhoods. I know that Chief Held is in the audience, but in talking with both police and fire, adding 16 lots at this location can appropriately be supported by the streets in this area. Finally, there was concern raised about loss of open space, loss of habitat for wildlife. With the subdivision proposed, there will be more open space preserved. I believe it's about 61% of the site that will be preserved as open space in return for the smaller lots. I will add that the Plan Commission also heard some testimony from some local realtors who did confirm that, in their opinion, the city has enough acre-and-a-half lots, and that looking at the opportunity for smaller lot sizes, these lots will range from about 2/3 of an acre to over an acre and a half. But providing the opportunity for smaller lot sizes that still will support considerably large homes, 4,000 square feet to about 7,200 square feet, really fills a niche of a product that people are looking for. The proposed plan, again, this is the 30-acre site. Oak Knoll dead ends into the site currently in a partial cul-de-sac. Oak Knoll would be extended as a public street. 16 lots are proposed. Some of the larger lots are located in this area. Portions of the site that would remain as open space, preserving some woodlands, providing an on-site detention pond, are located both on the east side of the site and a portion up in the northwest corner. As final plans are developed, there would be further detail developed, particularly in the areas where you have the new residential lots abutting existing residential neighborhoods. So if you choose to do so tonight, again, what is requested is no final action, but first reading of the ordinance that would authorize the zone change from R5 to R4 and the application of the overlay district. With first reading of that ordinance, we will simply set that ordinance on the shelf while the owner, the property owner and developer proceeds with development of the final plan. So the second action requested, aside from first reading of the ordinance, is approval of tentative plat approval for the Oak Knoll Woodlands Planned Preservation Subdivision. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Kathy? Vic?
Not a question for Kathy so much. So as just a matter to point out and a suggestion as to the motion, you'll note the Plan Commission recommendation does premise the tentative plat approval based on the ultimate approval of the rezoning, which is up for first reading. I would suggest that the motion on the tentative approval be specific as to be conditioned on that ultimate approval, just so that the record is clear as to what's being approved tonight.
Can we do tentative and final on the zoning tonight? You know, waive first reading, do a final on the zoning, and just tentative on the plat? Is there any reason why we just want to do tentative on the zoning?
I think for a number of reasons, we are better served to hold the zoning until we have a more conclusive outcome on the platting. I think that the tentative plans that have been submitted suggest that it's all going to be satisfied. I think we've seen in the past that sometimes there have been confusing signals on the part of applicants when they get approvals where things haven't been fully fleshed out and then later are found to not work as anticipated.
Okay, good point.
I have a question on the traffic study that was completed. With greater build-out of this area, is there any expectation for the, for a stoplight at Conway Farms and Waugnagan?
I got first dibs at Old Mill Road.
I know. But...
I'm gonna...
Plus, there are plenty of alternative escape routes from that street.
There are, but it just seems that most people want to go east.
Good evening. The traffic study did not address Waugnagan and Conway Farms.
Other questions?
I have one, just looking at the diagram, and I didn't spend enough time, I didn't go out here, so I apologize for that. The existing residence that juts into this subdivision has an access road underneath the pond that appears to then turn south for the entire distance of Lot 12 and part of 13, kind of behind it. On the aerial, the road doesn't just... Anyway, my question isn't that specific. Have these neighbors been involved in this, and are they, is everybody on board? Are they going to come off the cul-de-sac eventually, or what's...
I believe you're talking about this parcel. This parcel is owned by the Asfords. It was actually parceled off by the family years ago, so it's a bit of an awkward, awkwardly shaped lot, and there are easements that currently exist, and this property does access Stablewood Lane, just that property. The Asfords have been involved. They've spent a lot of time talking with the developer. Both Mr. Asfor and his attorney spoke in favor of the subdivision before the Plan Commission, although the city is not going to get involved in the private easement issue and determining on whether it will still remain after the subdivision's approved. What the city has required is that there is the opportunity for this lot to access the cul-de-sac and take access this way. So we'll provide the opportunity, but let the private easement issue be resolved between the private parties.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Kathy or Vic?
And the zoning change, all that does is reduce the minimum lot size.
That's correct. R5 has a three-acre minimum lot size. R4 has a 60,000-square-foot minimum lot size. The application of the overlay district provides greater flexibility under the R4 density.
Kathy, we really don't have R5 zoning in the city anymore, do we, other than maybe up on west of Waugnagan Road, north of Middle Fork Savannah?
The northwest quadrant is the area where the R5 zoning is most prevalent, and there there are limited services, limited road connections, and adjacency to the forest preserve. So that may be an area that is considered different. There may be a couple spot properties that are kind of like this one leftover that are R5, but I can't think of any property that's really developed within a developed area under the R5 zoning.
And those folks that had the R5 until recently, they were pretty much on well and septic, right? There was no sewer to their property, so they needed more land in order to accommodate septic fields and so forth?
In the northwest quadrant, most of those properties are large, and I don't know how, there might be a few of them that have wells and septics.
Anything else? Anyone from the public care to make a comment or address the council on this matter? Seeing none? Any final comments, any final questions? Alderman, Adelman?
Just a comment. I think the lot sizes are ideal, just ideal. They're really around 3/4 of an acre, a little bit more. There's a couple that are smaller, a couple that are larger, but the acre-and-a-half lot concept has really stalled, and there's plenty of housing inventory available on acre-and-a-half lots for people who want to do that. There hasn't been a lot of new construction in Lake Forest. I think these lots potentially, if there's a market for new construction of homes, these lots should get absorbed, and it provides a diversification of lot size. I live on 40,000 square feet of land, which is considered a city acre. It's too much from my perspective. I look at the homes in Middle Fork Farm, they're half-acre, they feel kind of squeezed in there on a half-acre. So from my personal perspective, if I lost a quarter of an acre of my own lot, it would be the ideal size, and I still could build a big enough home. So I think the developer is spot-on in his analysis and assessment of the market, and I think this will be a good thing for Lake Forest.
I would agree with Mike's comments in total, absolutely.
I found that very compelling as well. I mean, that was one of the most compelling parts of this. I like the open space, I like, but the smaller lots seemed very sensible, and I was glad that there'd been the interchange with the realtors to get that confirmed, that this is what we need, and it's great for the community to have a range of options available.
If unless there's any other comment, we'll, again, we'll have two separate actions this evening. The first is to grant first reading of an ordinance rezoning the 30-acre parcel from R5 to R4 and applying the Historic Residential and Open Space Overlay District. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Pendeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Adelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. And the second motion would be to approve a motion granting tentative approval of the Oak Knoll Woodlands Planned Preservation Subdivision, subject to the conditions of approval as recommended by the Plan Commission, and subject to final approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
If I may, just for the record, if that can be conditioned on the ultimate approval of the zoning to R4 and the overlay district.
Okay.
Didn't we just do that?
I'm sorry?
Didn't we just do that?
You just had first reading.
Oh, first reading.
Right, so this is conditioned on the final and ultimate approval of that.
So motion with Vic's change.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Pendeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Adelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Pity, very much. Next item on the agenda, new business, Metro commuter rail update. I believe Norm Carlson is here. Norm's obviously on the Metro Board of Directors, and he's our Lake County representative, so we'll look forward to hearing from Norm this evening. Good evening, Norm.
Good evening, Mayor, how are you?
Fine.
I hope I know how to run this. We're not off to a good start. We're not out of technology-based here. Where are we? There we are, the right one, okay.
This evening, I'm going to talk about two things, safety and a little bit about Metro. And we prefer to start out any conversation about a railroad that safety is the most important thing when you are around a railroad. Two weeks ago, I was on the platform for the 7:23 a.m. train downtown, and Amtrak came through, and rather than running on the west track, he was running on the east track at his normal 70 miles an hour. And there was a woman standing on the platform, almost with her mouth agape, saying, "How can he run on that track?" We explained to her that on the west line, that the line is signaled in both directions, so you should look for a train coming in any direction. That was very startling to her. So one of the basic rules that you have out there is to expect a train running in any direction at any time. As we thought about this more, we have a very, very unusual situation here in Lake Forest. The east line runs left-handed normally, and the west line runs right-handed normally. And the old Chicago Northwestern was the only railroad in the United States and Canada and Mexico that ran left-handed. So if you were on the east line, the east track would be the normal direction in the morning, and if you were on the west line, the west track is the normal direction in the morning. And discussing this with some people here in town was a little bit eye-opening. So I think this is something we should keep in mind as we consider some of the railroad instances, incidents that we have had here in Lake Forest. The other thing is, is do not trespass on a railroad. A railroad is private property, even though if it's owned by a municipal entity, as in the case of Metro, and Metro does own the wreckage here on the west line in Lake Forest. So also, on September 19th, we had some very interesting conversations here with Alderman Adelman and Alderman Waldeck, and our CEO, Don Orsino, and our board chairman, Marty Oberman. And we got on the subject of the underpass, and we got on the subject of all of the incidents that we've had here, as I prefer to call them. We now have the distinction of having the highest number of rail fatalities per capita of any community in the six-county area. I think that's a staggering statistic, and that's why I think, among other things, that the underpass is so important. Our chairman, Marty Oberman, raised the issue of the funding, and we got into a discussion on that, and he has had some thoughts, which he has shared with me and also with our CEO. However, if we are to proceed with some of these thoughts, our CEO would prefer that you, as a body, would adopt a real focus on Operation Lifesaver. An Operation Lifesaver is education, engineering, and enforcement. We may have another station blitz either in November or December to remind people about safety, and to remind them that the life you own, the life you save, may be your own in safety. So if you, please, would give some consideration to this, perhaps, and send a message either back through the mayor or through our city manager, Bob Kiley, I think we would like to have a conversation about a much stronger focus on Operation Lifesaver here in Lake Forest. So let's talk a little bit about Metro. This person is on record publicly as saying the economic model we have is not sustainable long-term. And as you think about it, you can probably apply that to any commuter railroad, and perhaps any what is called heavy rail rapid transit like the CTA in Chicago, particularly the legacy problem. Properties are in the same situation. We have a deferred maintenance situation that's due to the lack of funding. We have unfunded mandates, we'll talk about one, and we are experiencing increasing service failures because of the condition of the equipment. A quick analysis of our situation is, is on a daily basis, we are running passenger cars that were delivered in the Eisenhower administration, over infrastructure that was built during and prior to the Teddy Roosevelt administration. I'm paraphrasing a little bit our new RTA chairman, who first introduced this concept to the public. If you look at this photograph, under the signal bridge, you can see there's a plate over the door of the car, and if you look two cars forward, there's a same car. Those are the cars that were delivered in 1950s. That plate used to say Burlington on it, as the Chicago Burlington and Quincy Railroad. This is the age of the fleet. These are the diesel haul cars that run on most lines. The line down to the southern suburbs is electrified. 17 cars in the 1950s and so on. The box in red, those cars at this point, under any guideline, should be retired. They are in daily service. You can see the situation on the locomotives, and of the 837 cars, you are supposed to have a reserve fleet of about 15% of that. Our reserve fleet is 3%. That is the decisions that have been made in the past. So that is the reason why in the winter, when cars come out of service for various reasons, the trains are shortened because there simply is not any cars that we have as spares to put on the trains. as spares to put on the trains. So the board, for the first time in the 30-year history of Metro, has come up with a long-term capital plan. We're looking at 2.1 billion over that period and we would do the following. We'd purchase the cars, we would rehabilitate a group of cars, we would increase the number of spare vehicles in the fleet. You can see that we would purchase new locomotives plus rehabilitate 85 locomotives and we would spend about $20 million to improve what is called the back shops, which are down on 49th Street and 47th Street, right along the Dan Ryan Expressway. You can see them if you drive south down there. Our infrastructure, the bridge on the left was installed in 1896 or 1897. It is on the UP North Line. Trains coming here to the east station cross those bridges on a daily basis. The bridge on the right is the replacement bridge. We are in the first quarter of a multi-year project to replace those bridges. They are in the Ravenswood area. This is my poster child. This is Tower A2, which is located at Western and Grand. You can see that three tracks cross over four tracks. There are over 400 trains a day, Metro trains a day, that go through this control point. The building was built in 1911. The basic track structure and what is called the interlocking bed, which runs everything, was installed between 1933 and 1937. All the trains on the north line cross this. The equipment going back and forth to the yards, the Milwaukee North Line, I'm sorry, the west line, and the equipment going back and forth on the east line to the shop facilities cross this facility. So if this facility goes down, it impacts seven out of the 11 lines. It is air-operated and when the air compressors fail, we back up a locomotive and use the air compressor on a locomotive to keep the plant going. This is what's going on on a daily basis and if anybody would love to go down and watch a rush hour on here, we will make arrangements. It is something else to watch. Positive train control, you've heard a lot about this. You can see what the core functions of positive train control are intended to do. The first estimates on positive train control were $135 million. We are currently looking at $400 million. This is the unfunded mandate. What has come out is that perhaps there is much as a 5% annual cost going forward based on your investment. So we have labeled this the perpetual unfunded mandate and those numbers will grow each year. So when this is put in place, probably in 2016, we will start incurring a $20 million annual increase in our costs, just on this one item alone. This is, and there are other mandates that are out there that don't have as much impact as this, but these are the goals of positive train control. You can't argue with them. It's just the cost and what we have to go through to get it in place. When the Association of American Railroads decided to come up with a scale of 1 to 10, with 10 being the most complex situation, Chicago came out 20. We have the most complex rail network terminal in Chicago than any place in North America and there are 1,300 trains, 1,300 to 1,400 trains a day in the Chicago terminal. So this in rough round is our budget. 749 million in operating, 329 million in capital. Even with the fare increase, fares will only be roughly one-third of the cost of running the system, the cash that we need in 2015. But that's what we're getting. What we need is an additional 660 million annually for the next 10 years, of which there is no funding source at this point, to address what is called a state of good repair and the backlog, as you see, is 6.6 million. Backlog is defined as stuff that you need to do in your rolling stock and your infrastructure today. If we were to get that 660 million, the capital comes from taxes and half of the operating budget comes from taxes, the commuter would only be paying about one-fifth of the cash flow to maintain and run the system. So even with the fare increase, it's a huge bargain for those who ride. The bottom line is the Metro fares over the 30 years of existence of Metro. The red line is the peer group. The peer group are the commuter railroads in Boston, New York City, and Philadelphia. The green line is the CPI. You can see that our fares are nominally 60% of the peer group. On average, we believe that they should be about 90% of the peer group to adjust for the differences in the cost of living in the New York area and the Chicago area. That is based on some data we have got, we received. So even with a 10% increase, we don't even get close to what the peer group is charging. So overall, it's a 10.8% fare increase for the next year. It is 68% over the 10-year period, so we can fund the improvement program, but we still have a funding gap of 1.3 billion, even with a 68% fare increase. A personal victory is the second one. We have restored the discount on the 10-ride ticket. That became a cause celebre for many of us. We thought that that was a very inappropriate decision to do that. The weekend pass, which is a huge bargain, is going to be increased to $1. We are restoring some of the old business rules, if you will. People can still write down on their monthly ticket. That was taken away two years ago. We thought that was very bad because many people don't get their check until the end of the month and they don't have the ability to buy a ticket because the ticket offices aren't open. So we restored a benefit to our commuters that was taken away two years ago. One-way tickets will be extended. That's another thing that was done two years ago that we are reversing. And the onboard penalty is being increased to encourage people to use the app that is forthcoming or to buy their tickets at a ticket office. And we will have a no refund policy. These are just some of the business rules that we're putting around the fare structure so that, in the words of one reporter, we're at least giving a few spoonfuls of sugar to our riders. So here's the bottom line and a message that I wish to reinforce. Under the actual scenario, our fares are only one-third. Sales taxes is the principal amount and the second category, our share of the sales taxes and state and federal grants, which also come from taxes, are the remaining source. Compare that to what our needs are and again, even with the increase, our fares are a real bargain. So with that, I am available for any questions.
Any questions of Norm this evening?
So can you give us $6 million for our underpass?
I'm sorry?
Can you give us $6 million for our underpass?
Well, I don't think we can give you $6 million, Mike, but I think that we have a number in mind and we are hoping that we can work with, well, Bob, maybe you want to address all that going on, but I think we've got a very interesting campaign to get public support beyond. The bottom line of this is, this is not a Lake Forest project. This is a Lake County project that we are putting the resources behind to make happen. And I think that is the message. And I think that there have been some very interesting things come out as to potential uses of the station. I think our biggest problem, Mike, is to convince the consultants that the ridership is much greater than what they think it is and the basic issue there is because this is an Amtrak stop, they're applying a long-distance model rather than a commuter model and those trains are effectively commuter trains. So that, we got to get worked out with them somehow.
Mike, so you know, Norm's been tremendously helpful in planning and looking for opportunities for funding. Bob and I have had this conversation on a regular basis and we have a variety of different ways and ideas currently that could very well produce the dollars.
Great.
I'm tremendously passionate about this topic. This is, as Norm said, it's about safety and it won't be acceptable not to do this. We're going to get it done. But it's also about economic development. The Amtrak stop for Lake Forest would be the only one in Lake County and it would be a tremendous economic development driver to the companies that are here. Through Bob and Karina and staff, we've aggressively been contacting local companies who are supporting our efforts to do that as well. And we think, again, with a lot of pressure and a lot of different ways and different spots and help from people like Norm, we can get the job done, so.
Great.
If I may, I would like to emphasize, if the council could endorse Operation Lifesaver and the tenants of education, engineering, and enforcement, I think that would be quite helpful in our conversations down at Metro.
I was going to ask a question about that. I'm not deeply involved in the whole railroad, you know, all these railroad issues, so I'm not as familiar with some of the things that are going on around this as I might be. But when you say, I guess, I'm not quite sure how to interpret your comments about Operation Lifesaver. Maybe you could embellish a bit and give us some background and some color?
Well, I'm a very straightforward person, as you will get to know me over time. Elmhurst has a very, very strong enforcement program that they've had for maybe 15 years at this point. Zero fatalities, zero injuries. One incident where a car got trapped in traffic and the driver was not injured because the train could see it enough and just stopped and hit the car slightly rather than banging into it. Villa Park and Lombard had a very high fatality rate, particularly among young people. They worked with Elmhurst and there's a lieutenant in the Elmhurst Police Department who holds his services out on a gratis basis to promote this and has done it for a long time. And Elmhurst and Villa Park have cut their rates down to, I'm not aware of any recent accidents, and I hope by mentioning that I don't chinks it. So on the other side of the fence, there are people that ride in the cab of the Amtrak train and they say when they come into Lake Forest, particularly in the morning rush hour, the engineer grabs a hold of his breath and says, "Here we go." We have more people walking in front of the train on the west line than any other station on that line. Deerfield is next, Glenview is third. Glenview is a little bit of a problem because they come around a curve, so you don't have the straight line visibility that we do have in Lake Forest and in Deerfield. So I've heard it from the guys in the crew, I've heard it from the FRA inspector who rides the train and if you look at our rate. So I guess, if I may, I'm pleading a little bit, that we really consider more education and more enforcement to see if we can stem the tide of the incident rate that we're having. I cannot, you know, as I said, I'm a very straightforward person and that's my belief and I'm passionate about that as well.
What, Norm, what does enforcement look like? I mean, are we talking citations, tickets?
Ultimately, yes.
Okay.
You start.
And that's what happened in, was it Villa Park? Is that what you said?
Yes, you start with warnings. You keep track of the warnings. You try to educate through the dialogue. I'd like to see, you know, it comes out four times a year. I would hope at minimum twice a year, we could address railroad safety. I think we need to point out that we have this very unusual situation of left-handed here and right-handed on the west side and just keep reminding people of that and tell them to look both directions. It's not like a highway and the trains, as we call it, the trains run a long main over here when there's incidents as well. So, but as time goes on and if you have repeat offenders, then you ultimately cite them and ticket them. And most people feel that community service is a better penalty than writing a check because it's very simple to write a check, but community service, you have to spend a little bit of your time.
I have a question. I was, and I'm glad Chief Held is here. I was coming down Western Avenue and there was a police car stopped at the corner of Western and Deer Path and right in front of the police car, a guy climbed underneath the thing to cross the railroad tracks when it was down. The policeman yelled at him and stopped him and, you know, and was quite angry, but it never dawned on me that some people actually, in front of a police officer, would think that's okay to do. I just.
They do.
I mean, I know you've got signs up here and I was thinking how obvious it is to think safety around a train, but I mean, I think there's this people out there that just do it and don't know it's wrong.
Well, they, I would have to agree with you and there's their.
It's peculiar to me. I don't know, I wouldn't know what you'd do about something like that.
Well.
Tickets and warnings?
I think it's tickets and warning, to be honest. The other thing was, there was references to the incidents a couple of years ago over on this line. We were standing out there with a group of people, train pulls in, people ran behind the train without ever looking. And we just said, you know, one of these days, somebody's going to get hit that was right over here at the station. They didn't even look.
Other train.
Yeah, they didn't even look. They just dashed behind the train. And there were some incidents recently where people were crawling under the trains, if you can believe that. A guy got off the train and crawled under it because he didn't want to wait for the train to pull out of the station.
Yes.
I'll tell you, I thought I knew Metro. It's been unbelievable what I've learned since being on the board, just about people's behavior in these situations. The other thing is, is that with an object of that size, it is very difficult to measure the speed. And it gets down on you a heck of a lot faster than you think it does, particularly when they're moving between 70 and 79 miles an hour and the 79 miles an hour is the speed limit on the west line. I think it's 70 over here, if I remember correctly. But we have the benefit of most of the trains stopping here, but there are a couple of trains in the rush hour that do bypass. And then you have the Ravinia trains that when the equipment's moving back and forth from Waukegan, they do not stop either. But the other part of this, which I really focus on, is the impact it has on the crews, the first responders, and everybody else. I mean, these are not pretty situations by any stretch of the imagination.
Alderman, I might mention that Norm can correct me. I think it was five, seven years ago, we did undertake a similar program. Unfortunately, it was sort of a very short-lived program where we attacked it very strongly for about a month or two and then it slowly tailed off, you know, sort of as the problems tailed off and people forgot about the incidents and so forth. And so some of the conversations that Norm and I've had is how do we make sure that this is reoccurring because people, quite candidly, just get lazy. I think they just get caught up in so many other distractions that they have in their life and I think we have to be more diligent about just ongoing education.
Norm, I know.
What do we have to do to support this? I mean, this is something you absolutely have to do.
I encourage that you pass a resolution saying that you embrace Operation Lifesaver, which is education, engineering, and enforcement. I will bring out the Metro Safety Director. He'd be very happy to come out here. Our Chief of Police has already been out here and I've introduced him to our Chief of Police. He'd be very happy to come out here. We have a police station right up at Roundout and one of the officers that signed up there is one of the best guys on the force and he's indicated that he'd be happy to come on down. And all we need is the word "go" from you and I would like to see, even though we had the blitz in October, I'd like to reinforce it here either in September, I mean, November or December because there is a high correlation between the darkness and accidents in the winter because people are bundled up, have their headsets on, they're not paying attention. You know, you don't have the depth perception that you might have with light.
Can a community, oh, sorry. Can a community create a local ordinance that says the fine for breaking those rules is $100 instead of 50 or, I mean, can Lake Forest have a steeper penalty than?
I'm going to pass.
I don't know how to ask the question, really, but.
Well, I think the penalty now is, in the state law, is a couple hundred dollars on the ticket. I wish I would remember the number off the top of my head, but it's a stiff ticket.
The city, as a home rural municipality, has the ability to establish a fine as it chooses. We do have some limitations because of our limit as to keeping it under the level of misdemeanor, but we can go far above the $250 range.
I was just thinking, if we were the highest in the state and they could write about that in the newspapers, if it's only 50 bucks more than it currently is, there's something to make it a message. I mean, the two times I've seen people do it in front of police officers, they didn't hide from the police, they just did it like it was okay, like it was their choice. I just. okay, like it was their choice. I just, I didn't grow up with trains. I just thought it was peculiar.
Well, we can certainly look into it, and the timing would be very good, because as Elizabeth will tell you, we'll be bringing fees and charges to the City Council here very shortly. So, we'll take a look at it and make a recommendation to you.
I thought I heard Mr. Carlson suggest that community service might be more impactful. Is that an option?
Certainly.
Someone to wear that sandwich board on safety on the paint truck, string.
That's not a bad idea.
No, that's right. I think that part of the education is because these are the, you know, these are not, while we have had problems with kids in the past, clearly, many of these incidents are adults and employees and employers in the area. So, those are definitely an area that we have to attack.
Bob, is there some sort of downside with signing on to this Operation Lifesaver that I'm not seeing? Because it seems very important to our, making it clear that we have this commitment in terms of our moving forward to say, "We're a full partner in safety, and we hope that we'll get additional partnerships so that we can do something we know is incredibly important to safety, which is the underpass." Are there costs associated with this? Now, I'm guessing, you know, Jim would probably tell us there's some hassle for the police. This will not be popular. I mean, there's no question about that.
No, it's not. No, I know that. And I'm probably not going to be the most popular guy in town for suggesting this.
Well, no, I mean, but we have to do things sometimes that aren't popular because they're for safety. And I have to say, you know, that we have the highest number of rail fatalities-
Per capita.
Per capita. I mean, this is not a record we want to be, we want to be touting.
Right.
We need to do something about this. We need to move forward, in whatever ways we have to, whatever you recommend.
Right. Well, Alderman, to answer your question, yes, there is a cost. I can't tell you if it's a small cost or a large cost. And I think working with Norm and representatives of Metro will come back to you as a part of the budget process, or maybe part of that resolution, if we bring that, that will give you some idea. I mean, there were some creative ideas this evening, but maybe we don't use all police officers, and we do community service of some people. Let them stand out there at the corner and warn people not to be crossing when the gates are coming down and those kinds of things. So, or handing out information. I think those would be the kinds of things that we could look at.
The cost would be the diversion of the, of the police forces to the activity.
Yeah, no, I'm hearing that. I'm hearing that.
But beyond that, the program is funded by the railroads and others. All of the, all of the materials, we would be provided. Metro would donate its time. There's no charge for the time that Metro would donate. I believe we can get this officer, this lieutenant from Elmhurst, I believe he's operating on that basis. There is also an organization called the DuPage Railroad Safety Council. It was formed by Dr. Lanny Wilson. His daughter was killed in an accident in Hinsdale, where he lives. And they're very active, and they provide resources. And we even had an appeal from the father of a fellow who lives, I believe, in Deerfield, whose daughter was killed. And he has, he has dedicated his life to making sure that these accidents come to an end. And as Bob and I and Karina, we've had conversations with the family of the victims, and those are conversations I don't want to ever have again. I've had three sets of conversations with families of victims.
So, and I've had a little experience myself with victim impact statements. I have a sister who was killed by a drunk driver. And the telling the stories are often a very good, you know, at least a hopeful deterrent. You figure you're not, you're not making the situation worse when you do this. And it may be that we bring somebody forward from our community who's, or nearby, I mean, just, you know, a parent who talks about this, or a family member, and says, "This is why this matters," and sort of helps motivate us. I mean, if we figure out a whole plan to do this, I mean, obviously, we have to be mindful of the expense. We need to think it all through. But some sort of a campaign, I mean, this is, this is pretty scary stuff. And it is, we're so exceptional in so many ways. This is not the way our community wants to, wants to stand out and be exceptional. It's clearly not.
The Union Pacific, at least recent years, has annually brought, what they call, an Operation Lifesaver train to this area. Two years ago, we got them to stop the train here in Lake Forest, and we had quite a contingent get on. Last year, it stopped again. We had a few people get on. But the Union Pacific has got two men, one's a conductor, I believe the other's an engineer, who basically rarely see a train. They continually go around all the communities in the Union Pacific Territory with, teaching kids in particular, on rail safety. I certainly can work through, well, it's Wes Luhon, who is the Civic Relations Fellow for Illinois. And we can make every effort to stop the train, but if we do stop the train, I would really like to see us bring a bunch of people out and get on the train. And it's either a ride to Waukegan and back, or a ride to Kenosha and back. It's not all that investment of time, and you would experience the training, and we'd be able to talk to the people who are on there.
Great.
Norm, I've got a question for you.
Yes.
I know Marty Oberman commented that he rode up front in the, in the front car watching the various train stations from one end of the line to the end. And he was astounded at what he observed by people's carelessness on the train station platforms. Have you documented how much of the near misses or lack of daisicalness is attributable to people with their handheld devices, or maybe earbuds? And also, the accidental fatalities that you've had, how many, and what percentage of those involve distraction because of your phones from iPods or other handheld devices?
Being a railroad man, you'd be surprised at the level of detail we have. So, I'm sure we do. One of the most recent injuries was a woman standing, was at the Joliet Station. She was standing with her back to the train, and the grab iron, that iron on the outside hit her. Now, she was not killed or anything, but she did get hit in the head by it. And, you know, she was just standing with her back. You know, I never stand with my back to a train. You know, because there can be, particularly with a freight train, there can be straps, there can be a shifted load, there can be anything. And in one case, there was two fellows from Los Angeles for their first time on the railroad, and a freight came through. I actually ran up and grabbed the guy and pulled him back by the arm. He was standing so close to the freight train. And he looked at me like, "What are you doing?" I said, "You could have got sucked under. You were so close to it when it went by," because there's a vacuum as that freight train goes by. But then he calmed down and, you know, and said, "Thank you very much." But, you know, there's, there's these little things that you just, as Bob suggests, you just have to keep repeating it, and repeating it, and repeating it. You know, I've heard that psychologically, you have to do something 21 times before it becomes a habit. I don't know if that's right or wrong, but that's one of the things they taught us at Anderson. And so, I think that that's why I'm, you know, saying these things.
Well, certainly, if there's a consensus of the council, we can bring back the resolution. We'll have Jim and his staff work with Norm and so forth, and come back with a comprehensive program. As to not what we can do just one time, but what we can do over a period of time, and hopefully, address, I think, what we all agree is not a very good distinction to have.
Norm, thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, update on the east train station and the west train station. Karina?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm just going to briefly update you this evening regarding the west train station, some of the activities regarding the pedestrian underpass, the Amtrak stop, which is, you talked a little bit about that earlier. And you also have a letter over the mayor's signature that we plan on sending to IDOT officially asking for an Amtrak stop to occur, as well as I'll be talking about the east train station, the Phase Two exterior renovations, and bike path. Some of the project principles and goals for both of the projects, both at east and west, are public and commuter safety, congestion mitigation, regional services, and economic vitality. So, with respect to the west train station and the underpass, we've received approximately $2 million in grant funding, a million from federal and a million from state. Thus far, we've actually completed all of our agreements with Metro IDOT. We've completed preliminary engineering for Phase One for the underpass. We anticipate to have Phase Two engineering design completed by December of 2014, which will actually make it a shovel-ready project. As we talked to earlier, the funding gap, at this point, we have about a four and a half million dollar funding gap, and this mayor hit it on the head, and Bob and Norm, we are basically doing everything and almost knocking on everyone's doors to try to obtain this funding. And if we can identify the funding gap by the end of the year, January, February, we anticipate in going out for the April bid letting for the underpass project. And construction of the underpass either 2015 or early 2016. As I indicated earlier in front of you, if you have a final draft of a letter that will be going to Joe Schacter of IDOT, who handles transportation intermodal, and it's officially asking for an Amtrak stop, even if it's a trial basis, to begin as of July 1st of 2015. Very quickly, here's a schematic of what the underpass would look like. This is a west view, south of the station. You will notice that there are stairs that will, that will lead commuters directly through the tunnel. With respect to the ADA, we don't have an elevator due to the cost. However, there is switchback or ramps that will, will take individuals through the tunnel and on the other side. The east Lake Forest train station, since 2010, the city's received over $2 million in ITUP funding. We've completed Phase One exterior, which is, which was the roof and the dormers. And now, we are ready to start Phase Two of the exterior. And that would actually include painting, tuck pointing, windows of the exterior envelope of the building. We anticipate going out to bid in November of 2014 and actually start the project in March or April of 2015. We have also, with respect to the bike path, we've received approximately $1 million between 2012 and 2013 to separate the pedestrian, vehicular, and bicycle, bicycle traffic from Illinois to Woodland, also known as the McChlorie Bike Path. As you're aware, or you've may have seen, that the commed poles and utility work is underway, and the commed poles should be relocated and taken care of by the end of the week. We will be finalizing agreements shortly. And we anticipate that the construction to begin on the bike path in March. We expect that both projects will be completed by July of 2015. Briefly, I just gave you an overview of both the east and west train stations. I know that we've been hit on a lot regarding both, but I just tried to give you a quick little snapshot. And if you have any questions with respect to either or, myself, Bob, as well as Bob Ells are here to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Karina?
I have a question that it may be moot at this point, based on what you just told us. But about two or three months ago, Commonwealth Edison came through my neighborhood and buried about two blocks worth of cable. They used directional boring. They were in and out of there in about three or four days, maybe it was five days. Very unobtrusive. There were some grass that needed to be replanted. And I remember that we had a proposal from them for something like $700,000 to do that for the, basically, what, two blocks? Was it two blocks or a block and a half? I mean, they came through and did that in our neighborhood as if it was nothing. And I just, I'm still staggered by the number they came up with. And I just, I almost reached the conclusion that they just didn't want to do it, so they gave us a ridiculous number, and then they told us we had no other options. And did we explore paying for it ourselves to see what we could have gotten it done for? Because, and it may be too late now, but I just, I just think that that maybe ought to be revisited.
Seven bucks a foot for inch and a quarter flex?
$600 a square, an lineal foot. No, $6,000 a lineal, was it, something like?
I think it's seven bucks a foot if you have to go hire a guy with a minimum.
Well, it was seven or $800 a lineal foot, if I remember.
Bob Ells, I don't know if I can answer your question directly. I think part of the significant cost differential was the size of the cable and the type of cable versus rear yard versus what they've got running along McKinley. But Bob, you probably know better than I on the two projects.
Yeah, that's the 31 KVA out there. It's, it's three cables, three very large cables that has to be separated in a duct bank, concrete duct bank underground. There has to be, because of the heat that's generated from those cables, they have, you have to have, basically, at minimum for that, you have to have six, a six duct, duct bank, because there has to be a separation between each cable because of the heat. And they gave us pages of information like that. But there was a lot more to it than what you'll see when a cable is done for a service to a house, or even as they-
This was for the neighborhood?
On your street, right. But this is the 34, or the 31 KVA is a distribution. It goes all the way through Lake Forest.
So, you couldn't just bury it the way they did?
Correct.
They would have to trench and put in the concrete-
Correct. They would have to open excavate and form and pour concrete and things like that. So, it was a bit of a different animal.
Okay. Never mind.
Good question, though.
Any other questions for Karina?
The other thing I would add, too, is that we will be putting up at both of the stations, information for commuters to know what the schedule is, particularly as we get closer to the spring. It's going to get disruptive out there, and so, we want to give people as much advance notice as we possibly can.
Are we going to stop bike riding in the parking lot if we have a safer alternative? Because it's, I mean, I'm pro-bike and everything, but that's the worst, and that's why we're building the bike path. But are we going to try to stop the bike riding through the parking lot when the bike path is done with any sort of signage or bumps or?
Yep. My understanding is the design is that you will not be able to get from the bike, from the parking lot onto the bridge, for example. That will be separated. So, they can still ride in the bikes.
For safety's sake.
Yeah, they can still ride in the parking lot, but they won't go anywhere.
Karina?
So, Phase Two is the interior, correct?
Yeah.
Are we putting in the ADA bathrooms?
Well, there are a couple of phases. There was, there's Phase One, and how we had to kind of break up the project. We have Phase One exterior, and there's also kind of Phase One B exterior. And then Phase Two would be interior. Now, interior would only be done at this point if there's any money left over, if you will, that have, that has not been expended from the first. So, we've actually already expended for the roof and the hip dormers about eight, $800,000? A little under $800,000. So, we have a little over $1 million. We're going to finish the exterior. Whatever's not, if we still have money left over, we'll start on the interior. If not, we continue to apply for grants, as well as we've also been working very closely with the Historic Preservation Foundation to see whether or not there are any funding efforts on their half as well.
I think to answer your question directly, Alderman, I don't want to promise anybody that the bathrooms are going to get done. We hope that there will be funding left over after we finish the tuck pointing and painting and so forth. But I know that the fire department is very interested in seeing us make some improvements to, I think, the sprinkling system and-
Like safety components?
Some of the HVAC components first and foremost. So, those would be some of the things that we'll be looking at.
You know, I vaguely recollect, wasn't the first grant for like 1.2? And the second grant for another 1.1 or 1.2?
The first grant was $835,000.
Oh.
Yeah. And the second one was 1.2. So, we have about a total of two.
And I thought the first grant was supposed to be for the exterior and the second grant for the interior. So, I'm wrong in my recollection?
Uh, how we folded it together was exterior and then interior.
Yeah.
So, because of the importance of the exterior envelope, we knew that we needed to keep moving forward with exterior aspects of the work.
We have plans to do the bathrooms. And we've looked at, you know, what the cost estimates are. So, you know, if we have some money left over but not enough to cover it, we may come back to you. But I just don't want the public out there thinking that they're automatically going to be- to be done because until we actually bid the project, which we'll be doing here shortly, we don't know how competitive the pricing will be just to finish the exterior. And I know that people a lot smarter than me know that there's a lot of tuck pointing that needs to get done on the exterior of the building. So that will probably eat up a lot of that extra money.
Holy cow, okay. But in the Northern Trust space, I guess that's last priority. We don't touch that.
Right.
Okay.
Thanks, Karina. Next item on the agenda, additional items for council discussion. Anything else this evening?
Any one?
If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Wait, may I make one coming?
You just made it under the line.
I'd like to thank Michael Thomas. Not only did you do a great job on Telegraph Road, but your crews have been going through, doing, what do you call it, cutting and patching the edges? Because the edges took a real beating and I wasn't expecting that on top of the new road by Telegraph, but I see old mill, you've done the cut and patch in other places. And thank you.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do you have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing them, we adjourn. Thank you. Good evening.
Okay, who's got an extra large in there that they want to swap for medium?